All right, seven o'clock for call meeting. Your honor, and we're going to remember your present.
Wilson.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Reed.
Morris.
Here.
Next is consent agenda. The following items may be approved in their entirety by the board upon motion made, seconded, and passed by a majority. Any member may request a separate vote on any or all items contained in the consent agenda. May I have any questions about it? Because I think I'm good.
I have no question.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Take it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Nothing on item three. Item four is presentation of our annual audit. And now the booklets. Have we met? Robert Babcock. Buddy Carroll, Robert. Meet you. Thanks, Buddy. And I have one more that you put in your record of the minute. This is the financial audit of the 2016-17 fiscal year. The finances are historical, so I'm not going to drag you through all of the presentation of where we were and everything else. I'll just touch base real quick on one of the financial statements. And if you'll go to page number, excuse me, six at the bottom. And when you get to page number six, I want you to go two pages further. And that'll be exhibit B. Whoop, we went right past it. Almost there.
That's no count.
There we go. Okay. This particular financial statement gives you the changes in fund balances. And again, we were talking about June 30 of 17. If you look down at the very bottom, it gives you your fund balance on hand at June 30, 17. First column is your general fund. That is the operating fund of the district. Down at the bottom, it says $961,000 at June 30, 17. The line just above that is the position at June 30 of 16. So the third line from the bottom gives you any change that you may have had within the fund from one year to the next. Now, the next column represents the combination of the building fund and the child nutrition fund. So the $6,400 change that you had, the building fund increased $11,000, and the child nutrition fund went down $4,000. And in the child nutrition fund, that's really not a significant change because the state doesn't want you having more than three months' operating expenses, that you have nine months of operation. So they want you to get it down to no more than three. And if you have more, then you've got to make explanation. And typically, the result of that is, well, we're looking at new freezers or whatever. So the operations, since you did have that negative, it's really not detrimental to the district. Back on exhibit B again, under debt service. Excuse me, this is my third report today. I'm about out of gas. And the debt service is the sinking fund. Now, it really wasn't active, that $89. You see at the very top, that was a late collection of some outstanding taxes that could be two years old when they have a share of sale or whatever it is and recover. And so it actually just increased you by that $89. Now, you have a new bond issue? Are you proposing one?
Not yet.
Okay. So the sinking fund is basically just laying there idle. And if you proclaim that we have no further need for this, and we don't intend to have any bond issues, then you can have a public hearing and move that $2,000 forward to your building fund or general fund. If you do anticipate doing something, I just leave it there. Let it set idle. Capital projects, excuse me. You have no building funds, building bond funds, transportation bond funds at this time, so you had zero debt. The right-hand column actually gives you the full cash available, unobligated money for the district over there of $1,187. I'd like for you to turn back one page because we do have another fund that is accounted for in the balance sheet, but we don't put it in the changes in fund balance because it's not anything that affects the operation of the district. The third column from the right where it says fiduciary fund types, this is a trust, an agency fund. This one is an agency, and it's the student activity fund. Again, we're just a custodian of the students' money. We have to declare it in our balance sheet, but we don't show a performance in our changes in fund balance. Were we looking at exhibit A or C? A. Yeah. And right here on the fiduciary column, okay, that belongs to the student body. But we don't show it over on B because we're not in control over it other than making sure they do the right thing. While we're on exhibit A, if you want to look down there at the very bottom on the left, it'll say fund balances. And you can see from left to right, if it's restricted money, such as your debt service, that's right there at the top, the $2,000. In the second column, where it's the child nutrition and the building fund, you can see on the left-hand side, the $213,000 reserved for building programs, and the $10,000 is reserved for the child nutrition. We don't have a co-op. The balance sheet just prints it out, and it's just on there for good looks. Put it that way. Unassigned means it's the general fund. That's the total commitment of the district, whether it's instruction, transportation, maintenance of the building, and that money is available for those purposes. That's kind of a quick jump on the financial statements. Are there any questions? If not, what I'd like you to do is, let's just go right to the heart of what an audit report is about. And if you go back to page 15, numbered at the bottom toward the back of the audit report. Now, for the newer members, the notes to financial statements identify the full operation of the district. It gives you the historical basis of where the money comes from, what funds are actually collected, and your outstanding debts, if you had any. It also gives surety bonds. It talks about the teacher retirement system. So these are your booklets, and feel free to go through them. If you had any questions about it, you can ask me. I prefer you ask James, but he's certainly welcome to call. He can answer these questions for sure. On page 15, if you'll look under the first highlighted area, internal control, the second paragraph there, this is where we identify any deficiencies that the district might have, whether it's significant or whether it's a material-type item. And if you look at that, under that second paragraph, the very last sentence, significant.
What?
15, 6. Let me show you. Were you, did you have questions about this?
Yeah. Way back.
Yeah, way back. There you go.
Somebody can't count.
There's some financial information.
Numbered at the bottom.
Yeah. 14, next page is 15.
You're right. I should have explained that. Audit reports go by schedule, exhibits, notes to financial statements have their own numbers. The letters have their own numbers, so I apologize for not making that clarification.
You're fine.
Okay. The item down there, if you look at the third paragraph, you'll see down at the bottom, I did not find any material weaknesses during my audit. So a significant deficiency would be something that I have to report on from statute or federal compliance. A material item would be something financial that the district used in the wrong appropriation account or fraud. So we didn't have any of those items that we needed to talk about. You'll turn the page. Very top of the page, you'll see where we address things that we felt that the management needed to have an awareness of. These are just basic internal control items that we felt needed correction. If you'll turn to page 8, 19, numbered at the bottom. These are the three items that came to our attention. We found one, during all the payroll that we tested and everything, we found one item that was not in compliance. The previous superintendent was paid what is called a teacher retirement offset. This is something that the state allows an administrator to get because they don't get the same benefit that teachers certified get. So this particular item, the superintendent was paid one month's teacher offset, teacher retirement offset. Now, the reason we're identifying this is because this was a dual administrator, and the other school district provided the full teacher retirement offset. So we found this, and she wasn't entitled to this. So as James will tell you later, or has already, he's already contacted that administrator and in process of trying to reconcile the situation. Do you want to talk further on that?
I've made contact. I'm just waiting to hear back.
Okay. Item B2, competitive bid requirements. In short, the bids were let, the bids were received, they were sealed. The law requires that publication be made 21 days prior to the opening. The publication was made 21 days prior to the opening, but you have to have a second publication in the next week. You have to publish twice. So we failed to publish that twice. Also, each sealed bid on a project like this has to have two affidavits that are required, a non collusion affidavit, which means no two bidders or anybody got together to squeeze out another one so that they would get, you know, they could collude on this. And the other item was a business relationship affidavit, which means that the successful bidder didn't have any ongoing business with any member or officer of the board. I was told that they were received, but we haven't seen them, so I have to go ahead and address it. The next one, B3, timely depository of funds. This was something that, the intention was very good, but when the lunch money was collected, it was not turned over immediately to the activity fund custodian. That's the individual that has to retain responsibility. The collections were made for a safeguard of segregation of duties, but the money just wasn't turned over on a timely basis. I think that's totally been resolved now, and the flow is good. Those are the two, or excuse me, the three items that we addressed this year. Last year, we had, if you'll turn back to page 18. This particular item was addressed in the 15-16 year. And of course, we found that the titles on a lease purchase were in the name of the district, but the district doesn't own the items of bus and the VAG truck. If you don't own the items, you can't have title to it. So our recommendation was take it back to whoever the financing was, the bank, and the bank has to have their name on the title until the last payment, and then you can have the bus in your name. And it's my understanding that those titles have since been corrected. Otherwise, it was a very, you know, it was a good audit. The personnel were very receptive to our inquiries. I know that James is just answering to somebody else's issues here, but I think he's well-informed and has a good handle on what you're supposed to do and not to do. So compliment Patricia and Tamara. Is that the right? Is that the right name? Okay. So any questions of me? If not, the proper procedure is to see if we can get a motion to accept the audit as presented, and then I will forward it on to the State Department as required. I make motion to accept the audit.
Simon.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Yeah, I have some documents here that need to be signed. This one right here is the affidavit that you were present, you understood any concerns that I might have had in your agreement to correct your procedures. And there's no place for the clerk to sign, so just simply sign it as a board member. James, I need your signature on this. This just says you got to deposit, and I'm going to forward to these.
One day.
Yes, sir.
And four day.
Nine. Okay, and then this one, that says that you don't have any lawsuits pending. Not personally, but by the school. This one is a lengthy, lengthy letter that simply says, "You've provided us with everything we asked for, and to the best of your knowledge is true and accurate, and we have since reviewed it and find it to all to be accurate."
Buddy, does Mr. Mueller need to sign that?
Yes. And also need, do you have your notary?
It's in my office. Can I go grab it?
Would you mind? We won't. I won't let you conduct any business.
Okay.
Great. She's going to have to notarize this because it's, I can't take it back to the office. Wouldn't be official that way. But in all reality, it's a very good audit. District makes a good effort to do the right thing, and that's the objective, and I hope that it continues on like that. I'm going to retire this year, so I wish you good luck. Fifty years of audits.
Enjoy yours as much as I'm enjoying mine.
I hope to.
I no longer have bad days.
That's good. I've got some bird dogs that need some training, and sons that live in Colorado and have access to a lot of streams, and I'm going to continue doing county work, doing the budgets for 10 of the counties, Ratt Woods and all of that. So you'll probably still see me. And there's a possibility that I could contract out to the office, and you know, they want to send me out into the boon docks and, excuse me, this is. That's what they say, "You want to go out west? Okay, fine, I'll go." So you may see me and you may not. So I'm open to it, but it's not mandate, so.
The boon dock.
It'll be different. I ain't never had.
Senator on county.
It is. We do hooker, so hooker and foregun and beaver and.
Why not felp?
That is really out there.
I was the acting manager of Little, Black Mesa State Park out there for six months.
Six months? Is that all you can handle?
They're so far out in the boon docks, they're in a different time zone.
But it's been a pleasure working with you all. It has been.
Yep. Thirteen years. So I've been seeing you a long time.
Yes, you have. And it's all been good.
For the most part.
Yeah.
And part of the audit that you guys have, he's alluded to is, anytime there's a recommendation or thing, provide a response for the district and how we're going to correct it or have corrected it. I have done.
Thanks, Buddy.
That as appropriate.
Thank you. Do you want to read these off? I think that's probably pretty important. This is a, let me put it this way, this is probably the most professional response letter I've ever seen. Usually it's just, here's the item, and okay, here's what we're going to do. But this is going to turn some heads. I concomit you on this.
Thanks. So basically, you state the error, what the district did. You state the recommendation from the auditor, and then what the district has done or will do to correct the issue. So on the teacher retirement, we have made contact with the former superintendent, seeking resolve as recommended. With the roofing project, the district will have reviewed the competitive bidding act, and will take steps to solicit bids according to recommendations. And then we'll retain the evidence of doing so because that's what we missed here. We did it, but we just couldn't find that piece of paper to prove it. It didn't happen unless you can prove it, kind of thing. So we've done that. And then with the activity fund, we had already made a change in what we were doing in segregating of duties, but we've gone back over those and will make deposits on a timely manner. So that's, this shouldn't come back up.
Was that everything with the audit? And we want to, I wish our information reports and A is superintendent report.
Well, the legislature is in full swing. We have had a lot of media, a lot of bills, lots of things are happening up there, and it's a dizzying, dizzying time trying to follow it and keep it up with it. I can say that I'm very appreciative of Senator Murdock and Representative Newton for their continual questioning and asking and hearing me give them my input on current bills and legislation that would impact our district. That's very good, at least to hear them get a text or a call or something, 11 or 12 o'clock at night because they just got a bill. They are both very active and understand our situation and seek our information. So I'm very appreciative of that. Teacher pay raise bill did go through. So of course, one of our duties is to plan and budget ahead for that next year, barring any changes at the moment with that statute, which session's not over, so you never know. It will cost us about $105,000 next year. Now, that's burdens and everything, not just what the teachers would receive and raise us. But, so they have about $105,000 next year. Our carryover right now, we're estimating it right around $130,000, I mean, $830,000. So we have no short-term issues coming up with that. Yes, we will need to be watching our budget. I met with the support staff today, and if you look at our numbers, anything other than payroll, we spend about $300,000 other than payroll. So that was, the support staff are the people that make the ask for our things that we need around the district. So I've asked them all to start, you know, be cognizant of this issue, and let's see if we can save in little things because it'll add up to big money in the long term. So that went really well today. The basketball you've got in your documents, Coach, I've asked him to provide us with what he's going to do this summer with our basketball team. We had a very good year this year, and kind of what's his plans to improve. And he's given me, take the girls to three camps, take the boys to three camps this summer, and he's kind of outlined how he wants to do it, when they are, where they Some things about the camps, of course, this is all very early, and so nothing's nailed in stone for sure. He'll be talking with the students to make sure who can go, who can't, and get all the final details. One I do want to draw your attention to is a really good girls camp in Branson, Missouri, June 7th through the 9th. And told them that if that is something that they do, that it would require board action to take students across state lines.
It was like $80 a student?
Right.
That's not bad, really.
That's not bad, not really. Yeah, we had to drive a long way, but as I've researched into that camp, it is a huge five-state, I mean, our girls will see something they've not seen. It'd be really good for them. Sadly, they don't do it for boys. But if that is, obviously, we would take female sponsors, not just Coach. But that will come up next month, if that's something that Coach wants to do for you, for the board to make action on, to allow students out of state. So those are those. Bus repair, we finally located some parts that nobody could locate, went across the entire U.S., finally found radiator support. It came in, and I know Mr. Baby's been hard at it since it's come in, putting the bus back together. So that will hopefully be finished within about a week or shorter, and we'll be, that bus will be back up and running. So that is all I have at this time.
My first thing is, oh, sorry.
Will the raises put us back on the formula anytime in the future, or how does that work?
No. The state will, for us to be back on the formula, the state will have to fund education at a higher level that we're not receiving enough local money, that we would then need state aid. They're creating revenue bills, and they're directing it towards education, but until it's all said and done, we don't know what that's going to do on the per-child rate. Remember, schools are funded per child. So you hear all the superintendent consolidation, all that junk. It doesn't change a dime because we're not funded on people, we're funded on students. But if they can, well, increase education funding, then that raises the amount that each child is basically worth, and then that could, in time, put us on the formula. So that's kind of where we are at the moment. Waiting to see what they do.
The annual dropout report. Last week, I received a report from the State Department stating our 2016 dropout report, which showed us that a 58% dropout, before you freak out on me. I freaked out when I saw it because I was like, 58%? That's terrible. But I got to considering and looking at numbers, just like this next, for 2017, where we only had one person graduate. They do a cohort group from their freshman year for those four years up through their senior year. So anybody that drops out in between those years counts towards that graduation rate, dropout rate. So like the last year where we had one graduate and one dropped out, it's going to be 50%. So it's going to make us look like we have an extremely high dropout rate, but we have to keep in context the number of students that that actually is. One person in a bigger district, that's 99% dropout. I mean, still low, so, I mean, still high, but low for dropout. So it's just, we have to keep that in context and remember where it's coming from, and we are double-checking that to make sure it's accurate before they finalize that statement as well, and we'll continue to do that. So for 2018, it's looking really good, though. So that's a bonus. The other thing on that next thing is golf and track. Our boys have been to four different golf meets at this point. We've had one come home with a third place, not one, but the team come home with a third place out of Luverne. And then we had one student, don't remember which golf meet it was, it was before this last one, that if he'd have been five strokes away from being in the top third. So they're doing pretty good. They're improving every time. Miles. So they're doing pretty good with that. We have not attended any track meet yet. Our first one should be this Friday. They were supposed to go to one Saturday, but it was canceled because of the weather. So they are still attending. Our girls golf has collapsed on us. One of the girls that was on the team couldn't be on the team anymore for, well, up until this past week due to personal issues. So it kind of affected that whole team, having to have four in there to play and everything. But we do have some middle schoolers that are interested in it and trying to build that up for future as well. State testing is going well. State testing is going well. It's got me a little stressed out, but it's going pretty good. Last week went really smooth. We went through several of our tests. This next week, this week, we have a lot. It's going to be a very, very busy week, due to our schedule for testing, and golf, and track, and conventions, and, so, it's, it's a very, very busy week for our kids all the way around. But everything's going smooth so far. We have four kids that have to make up tests due to different reasons, but that's pretty minimal and easy to make up, so, we're doing all right.
Round six ends. General. A is discussion and possible action to approve contract with Bank Central for IT services.
I had missed this, the last board meeting, to actually approve the contract with Bank Central that we were provided, we had, I just forgot to put the, approve the contract with them. We chose, chose them, but I forgot to put the contract part to approve the contract with them.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with Bank Central. Second.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number seven is finance. Item A is discussion and possible action to approve application to continue insurance with OSMOR.
They have reevaluated our building. The evaluation of the building has gone up a little bit, so, our premium, just a little bit, premium for next year will be $23,965 for the year.
So, move.
Second. Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number eight is personnel. A is proposed executive session to discuss the employment of listed, of those listed on Appendix B in accordance with the provision of Oklahoma Statute 25, Section 307b1. I'll make the motion to go into executive session at 7:33. So, move. Who are you getting?
I got Simmons. Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed. Morris.
Yes. Item two is, acknowledge the board's return to open session at 7:45. Executive session minutes, compliance, and aspects, no votes taken. Only things discussed on the, no votes taken. B is discussion and possible action concerning the employment of the staff listed on Appendix B.
My recommendation is to reemploy the employees on Appendix B.
I'll make a motion. Well, I'll second it then.
Babcock, maybe.
Second. Second.
Okay, I did.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Item C is discussion and possible action to approve contracts for employees listed on Appendix B and Appendix C.
Make the motion. Second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Item number nine is new business.
I know.
Here it is, we need to sign each of the three documents as needed. Justin. This is mine. I can't tell you all this.
That's front and back, so, signatures.